Thanks for joining us. I'm Nancy Furness and this is We've Got Issues. We've Got Issues is a nonpartisan, citizens-based forum where we look at topics of interest to the Tri-Cities. And we'd like to thank Tri-Cities Community TV for helping us to make these interviews happen. Before we get started with today's interview, I just want to acknowledge that our interviews are taking place on the traditional ancestral and unceded territories of Kukuitlum First Nations. And we thank the Kukuitlum peoples who continue to live on the lands and to protect the lands and the waters and all that lies above and below. So this afternoon, I am joined by Paul Lambert, who is taking a run for Kukuitlum City Council. So thank you so much for joining us today, Paul.
Thanks so much for having me, Nancy. Appreciate it, yeah.
Well, it's wonderful to be able to sit down and have a chat and catch up. I was wondering, for people who maybe don't know you yet, can you start just by giving us a little background about who you are and maybe share with us some of how you've been engaged in the community?
For sure. So yeah, as you know, my name is Paul Lambert, running for city council in Kukuitlum. So I ran in Kukuitlum in 2018. Very challenging for any candidate to get elected the first time, and I knew that. So I always knew it would take probably two elections to get on. So this is a really exciting election. I've been working hard in the community for the past five years, starting in that 2018 campaign. So a really exciting time to kind of be at the end of that five-year process and be able to be out there, talking with you, talking with residents. So a couple of things about me to start that I think are really important. So I'm a truly independent candidate for city council. So I'm nonpartisan. I'm not affiliated with any political parties. I think that's very important. The second thing is I don't take donations from developers. So in 2017, the provincial government passed a law making it illegal for developers to donate to city politicians. Unfortunately, what happened was those developers have shifted from making donations as companies to making donations as individuals. So in reality, nothing's changed. So in Kukuitlum, a lot of candidates are still taking a high percentage of their donations from developers. So I believe to be an independent candidate, you can't just be not affiliated with a political party. You also need to not take donations from developers to make sure that you're only looking out for residents. So those are two key things about me and my campaign to start. And then, yeah, my involvement in the community started five years ago. You know, I've been involved in different capacities. I used to coach and things like that. I've coached high school basketball and middle school rugby in Kukuitlum. I used to volunteer with the Canucks for Kids Fund for a long time. But then more recently, I've sat on the Sports and Recreation Advisory Committee for the city of Kukuitlum for the past four years. For the past two years, I've also sat on the Kukuitlum watershed, sorry, Kukuitlum River Watershed Roundtable. I work with a group called the Tri-City Green Council, which is an environmental stewardship group. And I also helped start a group called Protect Kukuitlum's Urban Forest, or PECU. And the focus of that group is protecting tree canopy throughout Kukuitlum. So yeah, so I try and be a really balanced person and candidate. So I've done work in sports and the environment. I do a lot of work on housing. We'll get to that later. But last but not least, I have a great passion for the arts as well. So I'm a musician. My dad is a wonderful musician, so he got me into music when I was younger. I used to teach music lessons in Kukuitlum, and I still play in two different bands in the city.
Wow, so it sounds like you're going to bring a lot to the council table. You've got, as you said, sports. You've got arts. You have a business background and lots of environmental background belonging to several environmental groups. So I think it's great to see you stepping up. Can you tell us why? Like, what inspired you to take that next step?
Thank you. And you made me realize one thing I should note, because we talked about the other one side of things. But my work is important. So I'm a small business consultant based in the Tri-Cities. So I help people start businesses, entrepreneurs. Sometimes it's their first business. Sometimes it's their second or third crack at it. But I also come into existing businesses, help with problems if they want to try and grow. And then, last but not least, I'll do sales and customer service training and workshops. So I'll come in for a day, for a week, for a weekend, whatever a company wants to do, sales, customer service. And I'll also do corporate culture workshops as well. It's a real emerging part of HR. So just wanted to make sure I got the work record out there as well.
Yeah, and I can see already how some of those experiences would really benefit you as a councillor.
For sure, yeah.
There's a lot of skills that you've talked about and experiences that definitely those would transfer over.
I appreciate that. Yeah, I just really believe in being a balanced person, a balanced member of the community. And I think it's key to have a broad area of experience and values and involvement, you know, to really understand the whole community, so.
So you said that you took a run in 2018, and then you said that this is sort of the end of a five-year period. So tell us what you've been doing. How have you been preparing? Or what have you been doing since the last campaign up to now and continuing to do to prepare for this election?
For sure. Thank you. So yeah, like I said, it's been a five-year process. I campaigned for a year leading up to the 2018 election. And then I've been campaigning off and on the last four years. Not every day, but off and on. And so I mentioned some of the groups I've been working with. So I'm on the Sports and Rec Advisory Committee. I work, I'm on the Kukuitlum water, Kukuitlum River. It's a tongue twister.
It is a tough one.
Kukuitlum River Watershed Roundtable. And two different environmental stewardship groups. But I'm a real advocate for accountability and transparency and awareness in the city. So I try to attend council meetings. I watch almost all of them online, especially during COVID. So I tried to draw attention to different things that have gone on in the last four years. We had some potential rezoning things going on in the city. A lot of residents were very concerned about that. So I tried to give a voice to that, even though it was kind of right in the middle of the four-year term. My approach is it doesn't matter when. If it's something important, I want to be involved with it and support the community and really listen to residents. And what they're saying is important to them. I just really believe in a bottom-up approach to local democracy instead of a top-down approach.
So I think you mentioned that you'd been out doing some door-knocking recently. And you were saying how important it is to listen to residents. Can you share with us some of what you've been hearing from them? What are the issues and what are people caring about?
For sure. And that goes back to your previous question, you know, why am I running? And so the reason I started this whole process five years ago was just talking to neighbors in my neighborhood. And a lot of people just weren't happy with, you know, Kukuitlum is a wonderful place to live overall. It's far more good than bad, by far. We're fortunate to be here. But a lot of neighbors had concerns, and they felt like the city wasn't listening. And they would give input when the city had an input process. And they just felt like no matter how much input, what they said, how much time they spent on that email or that survey, at the end of the day, the city was just going to do whatever they had planned to do.
So they're not feeling heard?
Yeah, in the first place. So they're not feeling listened to. And so the top two comments I get from residents, and this is across Kukuitlum, South Kukuitlum, Town Center, North Kukuitlum, no matter where you go, the top two comments are, "Wow, we are growing a ton. Kukuitlum is growing and developing like never before." And people are concerned that maybe we're growing a bit too fast. But then right away, immediately, they say, "Well, but we need to build new housing." Residents understand this, right? But they always say, "Paul, I'm not sure that the type of housing we're building is really helping." We've been growing and building so much, but has it really been helping affordability? And I really agree with those two top concerns from residents. And so I think we need to slow down our pace of development and growth in Kukuitlum.
Okay, let's talk about.
And then focus on the type of housing that we're building. Sorry.
No, I was just going to say, let's talk about that more, growth and development. I think I heard you say that we need to maybe slow down a bit or to think about it.
Absolutely, absolutely. And so I'm really proud of this. I think I'm the only candidate, to the best of my knowledge, who's saying, "Hey, I think we should slow down a little bit." Slowing down doesn't mean going to zero, right? It means going from 100 to 75, you know? Slowing down a bit, getting back in control, and really focusing on the type of housing we're building, not just the quantity. And a key part of that is, I believe, if that's the top comment you were hearing across the city.
There's an awful lot of growth out there. We see it everywhere.
For sure. And so we need to listen, you know? I don't believe that residents are wrong, you know? I'm not here to tell residents what to think or what to do or what we should do. I'm here to listen. And so my entire platform is based on that feedback from residents. But we've got to be careful because we need new housing. We need growth, right? So slowing down doesn't mean being ignorant and burying our heads in the sand. It means slowing down a bit, getting back in control, and really focusing on the type of housing that we're building.
Because right now, we're seeing, we're seeing a lot of growth and development. We're also in the midst of a housing affordability crisis. So it kind of brings up the question, are the types of developments that we're seeing right now, are they meeting the needs of residents? Or do you have some thoughts on the types of housing options that we should be seeing?
Absolutely, absolutely. So residents are telling me clearly, you know, for years, not just lately, that no, the type of housing we're building isn't meeting the needs of our community. And I think the best way to break it down is, right? So before 2015 and 2016, when the affordability crisis really started and really got bad, right? That's where things begin. And so to me, we have to start with young people and then build up, right? Because a lot of our more established families already have housing in Kukuitlum.
Right, it's hard to get into the market. I think any young person can agree to that.
And so I kind of look at it in five-year segments, right? So in our twenties, most of us, we rent to start out, right? So for a long time, we were hardly building any dedicated rental units in Kukuitlum. And I think this is a real weakness of our housing policy for a long time. Thankfully, we are building a bit more lately. But that's only come from people in the community, and I'm proud of this, residents, or sorry, candidates like myself and some others in 2018 really pushing that issue. So a bit of progress has been made, but we need more. So for people starting out, we need more dedicated rental because house prices are very sticky. So a big part of my background is in economics and markets. And so I think people understand this intuitively. But it's important to note that housing prices are very sticky. It's hard for prices to come down. Yeah, it's difficult for them to come down, right? It's easier for housing prices to go up than it is for them to come down, right? Whereas rent, the rental market is more fluid. Some people are on a year lease, even a six-month lease. You have more movement. Now, our rental market is incredibly expensive right now, but it's easier to impact the cost of rent. If we really have more dedicated rental units, we could make a dent. I'm not claiming that we're going to make it cheap, but we can make a dent in the cost of rent by having more dedicated rental.
But it gives you that flexibility?
For sure. And that's that first five years for a lot of us, even five to 10, right? Where we would rent, and that's our first step. And it's not just young people. Lots of people rent throughout their lives. So it's a win-win. We're serving a broad section of the community. So that's kind of that first segment. The second segment is people who want to buy their first home, right? And now, for most people, that's going to be a studio or one-bedroom apartment. Yeah, no, the townhome might come a bit after that, you know? So most of the smaller spaces that we're building, studios, one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms, they're in high-rise concrete towers, and they're very expensive. And so I think there's an opportunity in different parts of the city where we are adding density to add more medium and low-rise wood frame construction and do everything we can to give a bit of a lower price point for people to get into the market for the first time. Again, it's not easy, but there are things we can do to make it at least somewhat more affordable than the current high-rise cement towers. And nothing wrong with high-rise cement towers. We need some of that housing type as well. Yeah, we need a more balanced type of housing. So that'll get people into the market for the first time. And then the third part is what you mentioned a moment ago, and that's family-oriented housing. And so probably top five buzzwords that we're all going to hear in this election is family-oriented housing. So for me, though, the key is, what does a candidate really mean by that? What do all of us, what do we really mean by that, right? And so the first thing is, we need to mandate that in all new buildings, whether it's a high-rise, a mid-rise, a low-rise, we need to have more three-bedroom units and even some four-bedroom units, right?
Those are hard to come by.
They are, yeah. So we need to clearly ask developers, you know, we need more of those units in our new, in our higher-density housing. The second thing is, we need more townhouses and row houses, right? A lot of families now aren't going to be in a position to buy a traditional single-family home. So the goal for most young families that I talk to in our community is to get to that townhouse, that row house with three or four bedrooms, and that's where they're going to have their family.
You can start your family there, yes.
That's going to be your family home. So we really have a lack of supply on townhomes and row homes. So in South Kukuitlum, we've hardly built any for years and years. So thankfully, we have built some in Burke Mountain. But we've built very few townhomes in South Kukuitlum, very few in Town Center, and very few in North Kukuitlum. And families, Burke Mountain is a wonderful place to live. The family should have an opportunity to live in South Kukuitlum or Town Center or North Kukuitlum if that's what they want for them and their family. And so we need to bring that housing type to more parts of the city.
So you're looking at the different areas within the city and saying that there's different levels of catching up or adjustment that needs to be done?
For sure. Not only do we need to shift to a more balanced array of housing, it also needs to be balanced throughout the city, right? We can't just be putting people in one corner or the other based on housing type.
Right, building up one end of the city.
We need to have options everywhere.
Right. So do you think, are we asking developers to contribute enough? Or do you think that developers should be, you know, maybe included in some of those options, like below-market housing, or should we be asking something of developers?
Absolutely. So the way I look at it, right, and I want to be really careful, right? We don't want to come out and criticize developers. Developers are a really important partner in our community. We need to build new housing, right?
We don't have developers.
So yeah, so my criticism is not right at developers. It's the process and how it's been going. And I think we can do a lot better. And so, yeah, the way I look at it, I believe in leadership. So right now, often, a developer makes a proposal, right? They work with city staff. Our staff does a great job. But it's a give-and-take with developer and staff to begin with. Then it comes to council, and it's another give-and-take. It's a long process. And I'm not, to be honest, I don't support a lot of the outcomes at the end of that process. And a lot of residents don't either.
In what way?
The mix of housing that we get at the end, right? We're getting a very high percentage of small, square-footage, high-density, and a very small percentage of housing is low and medium, medium and low-density, larger square footage for families, more livable units. So I think instead of 80/20, we need to go to 50/50, something like that.
Right, so that's a big shift.
Yeah, and so I believe in leadership at the city council table. So instead of waiting for these proposals to come to us at council, I think we need to have policies. So we need a certain percentage of three- and four-bedroom units, a certain percentage of below-market and BCA affordable housing units. We need to give developers that leadership, that direction, right up front. And then they know what we're asking for and what our community needs. And it'll actually shorten the time period with them working with city staff and then working with council.
I see what you mean. So you're not negotiating back and forth, trying to come to a common understanding?
Exactly. They'll start closer to where our community wants us to end up. There's always going to be negotiation. The project has to work. But if they start closer to where residents want us to end up, it's actually going to be more efficient. And we will get, we'll end up with development that residents support, that meets the needs of our community, and it's actually going to be more efficient. And that even lowers the cost, only a bit, you know? It's only one part. Housing is complex. But it can lower the costs of new housing if that process is expedited by good leadership at the beginning.
Okay, so along with development, of course, we're going to need to see amenities. We can't just put people in housing and without, you know, consideration for the rest of how the community looks. Can you share some thoughts on parks and green spaces? Do we need them in the city? Do we have enough? Do we need more?
Of course, yeah. And use the word amenities, and it's a great word. And it would be, to me, be amenities and infrastructure. And that's a big part of the concern I hear about our level of growth is, wow, like, can our infrastructure, can our amenities keep up with this level of growth, right? And honestly, I think the answer is no. We've been growing so fast at such a pace that we simply can't, can't keep up. So I'll get to parks and green spaces in just a moment. But I wanted to share a story from a resident I spoke with the other day in the New Horizons neighborhood. So there's two elementary schools in this one part of the New Horizons neighborhood. There's Nestor Elementary and there's Glen Elementary, a little bit more south. And so I spoke with a mom who they'd saved up, they'd worked hard, they'd moved to that neighborhood. They get there, they live two blocks from the school. But because we've brought so much new density to that area, even though they can see the roof line of the school from their front yard, her kids can't go to that school because it's full. And that's, and this lady is very upset, and for good reason. I could not agree with her more. And so it just puts a real fine point on what happens when you grow too fast, too quickly, too much, yeah? Our infrastructure and our amenities simply can't keep up. And then you have stories like that, right? And so, yeah, moving back to parks and green spaces, we're fortunate. I think most residents would agree, maybe top five best things about living in Kukuitlum is our parks and green spaces. We live adjacent to unbelievable wilderness. Even within our city, we have amazing parks and green spaces. But residents are aware, when you go to Town Center, it's busy. It's crowded, right? And I love that people are out, right? We've got to be careful how we say this, right?
Right, no, I understood. We want to see people out there.
For sure, right? And COVID shifted, you know? One of the only, in a very terrible, terrible situation in two to three years. But one of the only small positives is that people got out more, right? They shifted to more outdoor activities because we were all cooped up in our homes.
And we need to be socially distancing outside.
And outside is much, much less risk of transmission, for sure. And so that's a part of why we still have a lot of usage in our parks and green spaces, and it's great. I support that. However, I talked to a lot of residents that say, "You know what? Like, it's a different feel. Things are different in our parks and green spaces than they were even five years ago."
Yes, yes.
And so that's similar to the schools. It's not so much, oh, there's no room. But it really does, you know, make an impact. So we've just got to be careful, right? Because we have wonderful parks and green spaces. And it's something that might get missed sometimes. It's really hard to acquire land for a new park or green space, right? Very difficult. The cost of land now is almost prohibitive. And so if we keep growing at this pace, I mean, the only thing that's going to happen is we're going to have more and more and more usage at our parks and green spaces. And there is a limit, right? There's a limit for enjoyability. There's a limit for safety. There's a limit for environmental impact as well.
Yes, before we start degrading the area.
And to be very clear, like, I am pro-growth, but it's about how much, right? And how fast? And so we need to be growing and developing at a pace that is reasonable, that works with our current amenities and infrastructure, and as we upgrade, that we can keep up with. And most residents I talk to say, "I think we might be doing a bit over that."
Paul, I have to talk to you about the environment. You've been really quite active and engaged in the community with respect to the environment. Can you share with us some of the things that you feel are priorities as far as, you know, tree canopy, waterways, like streams? What are our priorities in Kukuitlum?
For sure. So yeah, I believe the environment needs to be right at the top of our priority list in Kukuitlum. So there's lots to talk about, but kind of maybe three key points that I'd touch on. So the first one is greenhouse gas emissions. So the city of Kukuitlum has adopted the IPCC targets to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 43% by 2030. What's a real concern for me and a lot of people I know is that we're growing so much that we're at real risk of not being able to meet those goals of reducing our greenhouse gas emissions by that much by 2030.
Because of the rate?
Yeah, and it makes perfect sense, right? You know, I love new residents moving to Kukuitlum, but we also have to do the math. And the more people that come, the more housing that's built, the more cars that comes, the more, et cetera, et cetera, right? So there is, there's always a balance, right? We want growth. We want new residents, but there's that balance. So it's just something that's really important that I think flies under the radar, that just the way we're growing is putting it, putting us at risk of not meeting those IPCC targets. And I think residents need to know that. Second thing, and this one is more, I think a lot of people do see this, is tree canopy. And that's throughout Kukuitlum. So one of the groups I work with, it's called Protect Kukuitlum's Urban Forest. And the goal is to advocate for tree canopy throughout Kukuitlum, regardless of what type, where, et cetera. And so you can break it down into three parts. So in the south part of Kukuitlum, our neighborhoods there are very established.
So you need to get bigger, bigger old trees.
Yeah, so one of the neatest features of South Kukuitlum is you have tons of mature coniferous trees, and it's beautiful. And it's a real feature of our community. The second thing, we're having a ton of development throughout the city. So when you have development, you lose some trees. Now, again, we need some of that development. Don't get me wrong. But I think, again, we need to have a balance. So right now, we're clear-cutting every lot. I think we can leave some on the property line. I think we leave some in the courtyard. There's opportunities to leave more mature trees, making sure they're safe, wind-resistant, but with new development. And I think I got a little ahead of myself there. So just going back to South Kukuitlum, we're experiencing a lot of tree loss in South Kukuitlum. So we don't have any hard data on this, unfortunately. But our tree canopy probably peaked somewhere in the 90s or 2000s, and it's been declining in South Kukuitlum since then. The number one reason would be turnover, demolishing old single-family homes and building new ones.
Developing higher density.
Yeah, and again, older homes sometimes come to the end of their lifespan, right? But then, so it's about the how we're doing it. And so most lots are being clear-cut in South Kukuitlum. And some of them had a lot of beautiful, mature trees on them. So I think, again, that's where we can leave some on the property line, in the front yard. We can have a balance.
Be more thoughtful about what we're removing.
As opposed to just clear-cutting every lot, so.
So can you just talk for just a minute, for people that maybe aren't aware, besides being beautiful, why do we care about a tree canopy? Like, why is it important for us to try and protect and retain those big, mature trees?
For sure. And I'm not saying this in necessarily order of priority, but the number one comment I hear from most residents is they just love what it does to their neighborhood. You said the word beautiful, absolutely, but character, right? It really changes the character of a neighborhood. I was just out in the neighborhood last night, and I was just, wow, what a lovely place to be, right?
Who doesn't want to walk under the trees?
Yeah, and without those trees, it's just not as nice, right? So I think for a large percentage of residents, it really is about that feel, that character, right? But then, yeah, if you move on to the clear benefits, the environmental benefits of trees, the number one is shade, for sure, right? So when we have a heat wave like we had last year, it's going to make a huge difference in your yard and even in your home if you have shade over your roof, right? And this gets missed. Really, really important for drainage, sorry. So and this will lead into kind of my number three key point on the environmental side of things, which is, so trees absorb water. They reduce the speed at which water hits the ground. Their roots absorb it, et cetera. Everyone knows, you know?
Little stormwater management.
And that's the phrase, right? So yeah, our greenhouse gas emissions reduction, number two, excuse me, is tree canopy. And the number three thing I wanted to highlight is what you just said, is stormwater management. And a lot of residents, it might be the first time they heard this phrase, so.
It's something that kind of flies under the radar, something you don't think about.
It absolutely does. And it's one of the key things that affects the health of our streams and rivers and waters.
It's all connected. You know, you're talking about waterways.
Yeah, exactly. So it's probably one of the most nuanced issues, but that really matters. So all stormwater means, if people haven't heard the phrase before, really is the quantity and speed with which water leaves our neighborhoods and enters our creeks and rivers. And the speed and quantity with which it enters determines the health of those streams and rivers. So before, we had, you know, lots of development everywhere. The water would go into the ground, and it would gradually go into the creeks and rivers. Now, it goes into a storm sewer and just rushes in. And so we need to have drainage, obviously, throughout our communities. But it's going so much and so fast that it actually harms the streams and rivers, and it directly harms our fish stocks and our salmon stock, right? And so stormwater, yeah, it's just way more important than people might think. And the good news is, it's pretty feasible to come up with a solution. So there's some really good engineered solutions we can come with, come up with in our city drainage system to slow down the pace. You can't reduce the quantity. If it rains a lot one day in November, well, there's nothing we can do about that. But we can slow down the pace with which it enters streams, and the Kukuitlum River especially, because that's where a lot of our salmon come up to spawn. But they also spawn in Scott Creek, you know, all the different creeks and tributaries. Yeah, so yeah, stormwater might fly under the radar, but it's very important, yeah.
Okay, I'm getting the signal that our time is almost already. Yes, and we still have so much to cover. I just want to touch, and I'm sorry, I'm just going to pivot onto another subject because I really want to hear your. We know that small businesses are really important, or I think they're important to Kukuitlum.
For sure.
What are your thoughts on that? Why are they important? And what can you do as a city councillor to encourage more small businesses to come in?
No, for sure. And like I said earlier, I think balance is so key. Balance in our housing policy, balance as individuals, balance as candidates. And so, yeah, business is very important, right? We have to have a robust economy to make sure we have a great society. So like I mentioned at the beginning, so my job is working with small businesses, helping people start a business or coming into a business, helping them with problems or to grow. So we need to have a great business environment in Kukuitlum. So a key metric for businesses is always cost. So we've got to be really careful with our property tax levels for businesses. It's always a top concern for businesses. Regulation is, it's funny, you hear about regulation and red tape, and it almost becomes a cliche. But to a small business owner, it is not cliche. And so I think we need to have the fastest systems possible. I was talking to a business owner the other day. He had bought a business, so it was a transition period. It took him several months to get his new business license. Should have been a few weeks tops, you know? We want businesses to be serving our community, not worrying about paperwork, et cetera.
Waiting for things to happen. So you think there's some efficiencies that?
For sure. So we've got to, we've got to be very careful of our business tax rate. And we've got to be, yeah, make sure that our regulation, we have good regulation, but things are efficient. And then we also got to be really careful with rent for businesses. So a lot of small businesses in Kukuitlum are struggling with the increase in commercial rent. And it's a greater conversation, a lot of detail, but the city needs to be aware of that. Sometimes we need to be careful in not rezoning and tearing down too much older commercial. older commercial space too quickly, because that's going to put a lot of small businesses out of that more affordable space. And their business model might not work, or their margins are going to change significantly, and they're going to pass those prices on to consumers. So we got to be careful with the pace we do that. But then we also have to make sure that new housing, new development, I should say, has a real significant percentage of commercial space, to give those businesses a great place to go, and to make sure there's enough supply so that the cost of commercial leases doesn't keep climbing and climbing and climbing. With more supply, we can stabilize that a little bit. So I know we're running out of time.
I can see where your business background, like, I can see so many aspects coming in that would provide really valuable sort of decision-making abilities, right? Like, you've got so much to draw on. Our time is running out, but I have one more question that we like to talk to everyone about this, and it's respectful workplace. So, you know, when you, if you get onto city council, you'll be working very closely with people that might not always agree with you, and there might be issues that become contentious in some cases. How would you deal with those? Like, what skills and what sort of approach do you bring that would help you navigate that sort of situation?
For sure. So I try to be a friendly, positive guy. So, you know, today, we talk about some challenges that we have in Coquitlam and some criticism coming from the community. But at the end of the day, I think it's about having a great positive attitude. But honestly, having a great rapport with people, you know? And, and I think we always got to remember, and I think we're pretty fortunate in Canada. It doesn't always go this way politically, but I think as a country, we're quite good, especially the world over. And we can disagree, but we can do it with respect, right? So my approach is, you know, even though I might disagree with one or other of the other councillors, the key is having that great rapport, good relationship, but being honest, sticking to your principles, but always having that great rapport. And that way, I don't think things will ever go negative and toxic, right? Because we need to have a debate in Coquitlam, right? There are real concerns in the community that aren't being represented. So we need to have a debate. We need to have these conversations, but it needs to be respectful.
Well, thank you so much, Paul. I think we're going to wrap things up there. And I just want to say very sincerely, thank you for coming in. You've shared a lot of information and shown us, I think, what you could bring to city council. So thanks for taking the time.
Thank you, Nancy. I appreciate that so much. Yeah, thank you. And thanks to everyone for watching. And on October 15th, if you consider voting for Paul Lambert, I'd appreciate it very much. Thank you.
So thank you to Paul Lambert for joining us today. I'm Nancy Furness, and this is We've Got Issues. Thanks for watching.